City Council Regular Session for Tuesday, February 20th, 2018. And City Recorder, call the roll please.
Council Ryan?
Here.
Council Herrera?
Here.
Council Reed?
Here.
Council President Parsons?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Excused.
Councilor Freeman?
Here.
And Council Anderson?
Here.
Thank you. Please stand for the flag slip.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, we have a few special people in the room that we would like to recognize. Those are our volunteers that have worked tirelessly in this community to help make it better for our children and adults alike. And I would like to call Matt Lawyer to the front. He was the one that nominated our first two candidates tonight, and so I would like him to say a few words before I award them with their nice clock.
Few, few words.
Few words.
Few. Nate says I get three for the whole night minutes. Well, good evening, Council President Parsons, rest of the council staff. It is my privilege tonight to come before you with a couple nominations, and we'll go one by one. When, being part of Kaiser is pride, spirit, and volunteerism. And it is very important that we recognize our volunteers and recognize the efforts, especially when they go above and beyond and do extraordinary things in our city. I took the opportunity to nominate three individuals. Unfortunately, one could not be here this evening, but the first would be Hans Schneider. And for those of you who are not aware, Hans has been kind of one of the people that is a very quiet and very passionate advocate for the city of Kaiser. You can often see him at the Kaiser Food Community dinners over at the church. You can see him helping out with our volleyball programs throughout the city. And a couple of years ago, Hans and Mrs. Schneider decided to put in updated state-of-the-art sand volleyball courts that are heavily used throughout the year. And most recently, beginning in about the second quarter of this year, Mr. Schneider decided that, you know, he hadn't done quite enough with just the sand volleyball courts and wanted to put in a shelter for the volleyball players. And the original plan came in. It was great. We really liked it from the Parks Board perspective. And it went forward, and I guess at some point, he decided it wasn't quite big enough, so it got a little bit bigger and a little bit nicer. And the project was complete in the fall. It's a beautiful shelter. It provides plenty of room for folks to go in, enjoy the sand volleyball courts, and just really accents an already great project at Kaiser Rapids Park. And so, you know, Hans is one of those guys, he never asks for thanks other than getting to watch the kids out there playing. I've gotten to hear some tremendous stories about some of the folks that he's engaged, that one of them, if I understand, or two recently, have been able to get scholarships for college, mostly because of his efforts. And so, it's a big deal. So he is the nominee for the second quarter 2017.
So Hans, on behalf of the Kaiser City Council, thank you very much. If you want to come up, I'll give you your clock.
Stay out of the way of the photographers. Okay, so my second nominee is for third quarter 2017. So it actually happens to be, my best friend's dad came to me about a year ago and said, "I need a project." And I said, "Can we possibly be more vague?" And I says, "Are we talking money? Are we talking people?" And he says, "People. I have lots and lots and lots of people." And so, Daniel Kohler, on behalf of the Church of Latter-day Saints, volunteered to take on a tremendously huge project. When we first started looking at this project, it was estimated to cost over between $7,000 and $10,000, depending on how hot it was and how long it was going to take. And the project specifically was the removal of the 600 cubic yards of the wood fiber material over at the Big Toy. Now Debbie's not here, otherwise I'm sure she'd be pulling out her hair, but she remembers wheelbarrowing all of the sub-material, all of the fabric, and then hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of wheelbarrow loads of the material coming in. But we knew that in order for it to be AD accessible and bring it up to the proper standards, it all had to come out, and it had to come out by hand. Dan was able to organize with the help of the Church of Latter-day Saints. I don't even remember what the numbers are, but I know it was north of...
It says on here.
Sorry?
Over 200.
It was over 200 over the period of a six-hour shift. In addition, he got a lot of equipment donated. We had an expert equipment operator operating a hoe the entire time, so we were able to get all of the material put into the big section by the swings, and we had the five-yard loaders just going constantly. And so, when it was all said and done, I think there was just about enough material that took staff about a day, maybe two days, to get it all out. And it was readily accessible because it was all out from the small nooks and crannies of the toy. But it was a, it was much more than that. It was such a great opportunity to look at a community as a whole. We had folks not only from Kaiser coming in, but from the regional area coming in to do this project. It was a great, really, really hot day, and we had a ton of work. And so, the efforts of Daniel Kohler is the coordinator in the Church of Latter-day Saints is my nomination for the third quarter 2017.
Thank you, Matt. And on behalf of the Kaiser City Council, thank you, Dan, for your hard work. We couldn't have done this without the community when we built it, and when we had to kind of redo it again. It took, it took this whole community to make it happen. So on behalf of the Kaiser City Council, I want to thank you and give you your clock. And that brings us to our third nominee of first quarter of 2018. And that person just happens to be Matt Lawyer, who you just heard from, but I'm not going to let him speak about himself, because I, we would be here all night. So my, I want to, I want to say a few words about Matt. He, I first met Matt when we were building the Big Toy. He was one of the, one of the captains. And, and he was, you know, showing us what to do and showed my daughter how to use power equipment, which was very scary, and the whole nine yards. But he, he was out there from dawn till dusk. And, and we didn't, you know, we didn't tell him we needed to do that or ask him. He just wanted to do it. When we needed extra time, he was there to do the extra time. Matt then decided, asked me, said, "I'd like to be on the Parks Board. Do you think I could do that?" I said, "I'm pretty sure you could do that." And so, I'm glad that I pushed him and pushed him, because then, on the Parks Board, what Matt has done has been a tremendous job of bringing the community together and fixing our parks and making them better. He was instrumental in putting together a survey with the Parks Board and walking everywhere and getting volunteers and getting it on Facebook to find out what people wanted in their parks and if they would, if they would help us, you know, maybe get this fee together so that we could make these parks a little safer for our children. You know, we have more than just Kaiser Rapids. If you didn't know, we have 19 parks. So Matt was instrumental in getting together a band of people and doing that. And then not only did that pass, then he's come together now in, in a lot of public settings and brought in the public and said, "Now, what do you want? Let's prioritize." And he's been instrumental in prioritizing all the needs of all our parks and figuring out how we're going to do it, when we're going to do it. And I want to thank Matt for his tireless work on the, on the parks, starting with the Big Toy. But if I asked Matt to do something else other than parks, like planning, he did that too. So Matt, Matt's a say yes guy all the time, but his, he couldn't do it without his family there, such a big support, his wife and children. So we appreciate them allowing us to have Matt in our community, because he's, he's a great asset. So on behalf of the Kaiser City Council, Matt, thank you so much for all you've done, and here's your little clock. So thanks one more time. And I think Eric Beck, there were like pictures of our recipients. Yeah, so on the March 5th one, we'll do that guy. So yeah, he couldn't be here tonight. The other recipient was James Decker Whitaker, and he couldn't be here tonight, so we will actually have his presentation on March 5th at the next City Council minutes. So now it's time for committee reports, and I have Parks Board report from Dylan.
Hello. So, is it on?
It's on.
Oh, there you go. All right. So last week, we met at the Parks Board and mainly talked about one thing. We had a public hearing on the smoke-free policy that's been talked about for several months. And there was a lot of good discussion. A lot of people came, well, unusually high amount for public hearings, I would say, which is, you know, a handful. And we got a lot of really good information on that. I think the standout for me was a Mrs. Bushka, who was from the Marion County Health Commission or something like that. And she, sorry, I'm trying to find it in my notes here. Anyway, she brought a lot of information about Marion County's success in banning smokes, smoke in their parks, and Salem's success, and the reasons they put it into place. And a lot of the reasons that we were batting it back and forth on the Parks Board, because there's lots of opinions on it. And so, with her information and other examples and testimony from citizens of Kaiser, the Parks Board decided to recommend to the council that the current Parks rules, there's an ordinance right now that I can read you if you'd like, but we recommended that the council amend that rule to remove reference to specified areas and ban smoking in all areas of parks, including language to cover all forms of smoking and all materials being smoked. So if you'd like, I can read you the section there, but that was pretty much the main bulk of the business that we covered.
Does anyone have any questions? That seemed like a tough decision. So the city of Salem and Marion County both have that ordinance, they ban smoking in their parks?
Yeah.
I was unaware of that.
Yeah. And then there's a bunch of other cities that were brought into it, but they're the closest and most relevant. So Portland and Woodburn and several other cities were mentioned in our talks. But she actually had specific knowledge from the inside, so...
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thanks, Kyle. Anybody else? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Lawyer, Planning Commission? Thank you.
Again, good evening, Council President Parsons, council staff. Matt Lawyer, Kaiser resident, member of the Planning Commission. So briefly, we met last week on Wednesday, and the main topic of discussion was text changes to two areas, excuse me, three areas of the Development Code. One specifically was adding language to include the Kaiser, Kaiser Station Master Plan Amendment process, and then specifically to another area that actually called out a master plan process for amendments. The last part was some other language later on in the Development Code specifically related to master plans and the Kaiser Master Plan Amendment process. There was some opportunity for some clarifying language that specifically called out the Kaiser Station Master Plan Amendments versus just saying master plan amendments, as it resided under 3.113. Correct me if I'm wrong. I think it was 3.113, specifically related to the Kaiser Station Master Plan. So initially, when it was looked at, it was a little bit confusing, because it could potentially have an amendment process for other amendments to master plans throughout the Development Code. It was clarified specifically to allow staff to make scrivenor changes to the Development Code and to add the Kaiser Station Master Plan to the amendment process specifically called out in the section. And I think that was about it, if I recall. Pretty good for not having my notes with me.
Awesome. Any questions for Mr. Lawyer? Thanks, Matt. That was quick. Like it. Awesome. So this time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for public hearing. Our public hearing tonight is Hop Jack's liquor license, liquor license renewals for all of our venues here, and resolutions. So I do have one person that did sign up, Jose Dominguez, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. Could you come up, please, and let us know your name and city residence, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Speak into that speaker there?
Either one.
Either one?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, my name is Jose Dominguez. I'm the lead pastor of La Luz del Valle Church here in Kaiser. And my purpose, well, first of all, I want to thank you for, I want to thank you, the leaders, for allowing us to come and speak to you. I'm here tonight representing a committee that we have started here in the city of Kaiser. We have been in existence for about three years. We call ourselves the Latinos in Action Committee. And, you know, I'd like to share a little bit about who we are, what we're doing, and what we're doing now. And later, I would, I would like to ask the city council to consider some requests that I have tonight. First, I'd like to introduce one of the committee members, Olga Gloria, who is, who is here. Her and her husband, Arturo, are bilingual retired educators from McNary High School. Also, I have a, I have a friend, Rolando Herrera, who's also a part of our, of our, of our group. And what, of course, everybody would like to know, what is it we do? Who is LAC? Well, we're a, we're a group of leaders in the community, Hispanic leaders in the community. We have retired bilingual educators, and we are a group of six that meet informally every month, every third Thursday of the month. And I'd like to, you know, just throw this out, invite some of you to come. And we'd love to meet you. But what we've done so far is we've connected the faith community, the educational community, we've, we've, we've connected the business community. In the city of Kaiser, we're all residents of the city of Kaiser, and most of us are, are ex-migrants. You know, we, we, ex-migrant farm workers that had to overcome some huge economic challenges and educational challenges to get an education and to succeed in our profession and the careers that we have today. In our three years' existence, we have worked diligently developing relationships and networking in the community. We have, we have had several informative community platforms right out of Luz del Valle. We've had one that we called the Come and Meet Our Brand New Chief of Police. And we've invited Chief Tagg. He has been there. We've had another forum called Who Is Our State Police? And we invited about five or six state policemen to come, and just so that we could get to know them in our community. We also held our first-ever Hispanic Heritage Month event here in the city of Kaiser. We're very, very proud of that. But, but also, we've participated in, in, I think, one of, one of the best events I've ever participated in is standing in the gap here at the Civic Center. I think we had a really good, a really good turnout, and we're just very, very thankful for, for that participation. Our retired educators have opened forums on relevant issues that face the Hispanic community regarding family education, equal access to educational services and opportunities. And so what we've done is we've encouraged participation, and we've connected our Latino citizens and parents to get involved in the community and be a voice of representation in the city of Kaiser. You know, some of our parents wouldn't come to the city hall just simply because of major language barrier. I think, is that it?
That's it.
No, keep going.
Man.
Oh, he has another minute.
Sorry, I'm a preacher, but, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to finish, I'm gonna try to finish this up real quick. But some of our parents wouldn't come just because of the language barrier and some communication problems that they have. But I'm here tonight. I have, I'd like to hand out a, a handout of our vision, our goals, what it is that we're doing in the community. And we'd love to partner with you and, and what we're doing. Our vision is to manifest Latino representation in the community of Kaiser. Our goal is to inform, to encourage, to support active participation and representation of Latinos on all levels of education and civic affairs. And, and we're just kind of excited about that, but I want to get to the point. I'm here today to ask you, we're having an event on the 10th of May, and we have already reserved the, I believe, the Civic Center for that event. And I'm here to, to, to do an ask. The event will be on May 10th from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. And my ask is, we would like to know if you all would consider kindly waiving or reducing the fee for our event. This is the first time we're ever doing the first annual Latino recognition scholarship reception. How'd you get that out, okay? And so, we'll be having it here. And so, we just wanted to know if you all would consider helping us. Our goal is to help our young people from McNary High School. We've developed a relationship with Principal Jasperson, his staff out there. They've been very welcoming, very kind to us. They've told us, "We love what you're doing, and we want to support what it is you want to do for McNary High School." And so, there are senior graduates that are either ex-migrant kids or bilingual kids that we want to help and we want to support them. So again, I lay it on the table regarding the facility, the facility fee. You could either waive it or just reduce it, if you could. I mean, this, this is the first time I've ever asked, and I've been a citizen here for 25 years in Kaiser. So I want to just share something with you. The second thing is we, we also are, are asking for sponsors to sponsor our, our kids. We're believing that we're going to have $100 for at least 10 to 20 kids that we want a scholarship. And I just want to finish with this. Way back in 1978, I graduated from Woodburn High School, and I was chosen as a scholarship recipient. And I received a scholarship of $75. But you know, it wasn't the amount of money, but it was the, the thought that somebody cared about my education. And that little amount of money has helped me to get through, you know, that number one, I can do it. And number two, I want to, I want to give back to the community. And so, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. And those are my asks.
Okay.
Hold on.
City manager has something to say.
Yeah, I was just going to mention to the city council, this group is a group that Council Herrera actively sits on. And it has been practiced in the past that if a city councilor is part of a group, that they have the ability to utilize for the community's benefit, the community center. And it's part of his outreach into the community. It's something that's important. Oops. It's on. Thanks for the, thanks for the hand signals over there. It's something that the council has done in the past to allow a city councilor to sponsor an event here at the community center. So just throw that out for your food for thought. It would not be precedent-setting for you to do so, to waive the fees.
Okay, thank you. Council Ryan, you have a question?
I don't know where I sit on this, because I don't know if I can be part of the, is that correct?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
I'm, I'm part of the group that's actually asking, so I, I'm not...
Oh, that's totally up to you, Council Herrera. It is not technically a state conflict of interest. It's, it'd be totally up to you one way or the other. It's not...
I would like to make some comments.
And the reason is, is because it's a nonprofit group. But I, if I could, Council President, on the issue of deciding tonight, if you want to decide tonight, you would need a motion to suspend the rules, or otherwise, we could put it on the agenda for next meeting. Totally up to you.
I would, I would consider, you know, I would, I would say that we were, we would be happy with, you know, waiting for the appropriate time. It's not, this, this is our initial time. But my concern was that I was not in the conflict with the situation being that I'm part of this or this group. Now, as, as the city knows, one of the things that I committed to when I was elected was to reach out. And one of the things that we did, I got together with a few retired educators, and we talked how we can help this community, as to me. And we met with our mayor, and then our police chief, and several people. I think that the, this step here that we're trying to do is part of my outreach, because I think that the community, the Latino community is one thing that I put on my agenda to goal, to reach out to them, to bring them into city hall. And that's what we've been doing here. This particular thing, I consider it one of our, as a group here, one of our necessary accomplishments. And one of the things that we want to recognize, like I say, I don't know what the, what the, I know what we've done in the past, but I would say that this is directly connected to what my goals are with the council. So I, for what it's worth, that's where I'm at on that. And I, I'll...
Dan, you've done a good job with that, Rolando.
Okay, thank you.
City Council.
Council Ryan, did you have a question?
I do. Are you a nonprofit group? Are you a registered nonprofit?
Our, at, at this point, we are working on that process right now. I am the lead pastor of Light of the Valley or Luz del Valle. This is part of our vision to reach the community as a fellowship. So we are providing, we are providing the nonprofit status, 501(c)(3), because I am part of the group.
Right.
I am able to legally do this. And so, yes, we, I would say we are a 501(c)(3). We are planning in the future. We are working on getting full a status for our...
You don't have your, your number yet, right? You are not a registered...
I do.
You do.
I do have.
Through the church.
Through the church. I do have my 501(c)(3). I can bring that to you.
No, I'm with you. I'm tracking you. Thank you.
I would also like to just present what I've basically said to you here today, so that when you decide that, that time to make the decision, you'll have all the full information.
Okay, and you can give that to City Recorder, and she'll take that from you. But I think I have another question here. Council Reed?
Yes, yes.
Yes, thank you. I, a couple of things. First of all, there has been a lot of concern in the Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association that we would really like to see a lot more representation from the Hispanic community. So I was, I guess, my ask to you is to encourage your, your, your members in that area to attend our, our monthly meetings. We do have somebody who is bilingual who can translate at that, at those meetings, generally speaking. But, you know, that's the one that I sit on, but I'm sure that we, we need that representation in all our neighborhood associations.
Yeah. Thank you, Council Reed, for that invitation. One of our goals is we want, we want to connect and we want to engage with the Latin community so that they can come and be a part and, and be a voice and represent the community. So that is part of our, that's part of our goal and our vision, and we'll work on that as, as, it takes time to engage people, but I think it's not an impossibility. I think we can probably get some people through those meetings.
And, and let us know what we can do to, to help facilitate that as well. The other thing that I was going to ask, you mentioned the scholarships. Are you working with the McNary Career, College and Career Center with those scholarships as well?
Yes, we're working with somebody out there by the name of Council Rochelle, who is very engaged with us at this time. We also, I have the scholarship application for those students that desire that financial help. help, and so, we've, we've given that, that to Rochelle. We're also working with the counselor out there by Mr. Camarena, and he's also been very engaged in helping us.
Okay, thanks, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Council Freeman?
Thank you. Thank you Pastor Dominguez for being here. I know that you said you were working on outreach.
Yes.
So, we have a great outreach source right in our room, as you know, Eric, from the Kaiser Times, so I would hope that you would reach out to him, but if there's other ways that you can, that the city can help you get information out, you know, we have Channel 23, and, you know, you just have to fill out the forms to have that, you know, publicized on Channel 23 for our Kaiser residents. And I would just encourage you to do that in your group, to look at other ways to get information out to our whole community, because I think, I know Roland's very active in it, but this is, I guess, the first time I've really officially learned about your organization and the group, so thank you again, and thank you to Council Herrera, and I know that's one of his goals, but just to keep us informed as well, you're welcome here anytime that you would love to come, and so, please keep that in mind, or anyone at your group is willing to come and give us public testimony, and just keep us in the loop of good work, and then how we can help as well, and how we can attend those events.
Thank you, Council Freeman. I appreciate the advice and the, and the council, and we will keep in touch. Thank you. Thank you.
And then I just have one thing, too. If someone wanted to become a sponsor, and they wanted to write you a check, or do they write the check to the church, or do they go to...
Just go ahead and write it out to LAC, the LAC Committee, and that'll go right into that, that fund. We have a sponsor form, I mean, I could pass it around and get every one of you to... I'm just kidding, but...
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for coming in, appreciate it.
Appreciate your help, yes.
Thank you.
I think this is something, can we, city manager, get the information together for the next city council meeting and have it, have that information available so that we can decide if we want to make a motion on it?
We can do that, yes.
Awesome, thank you. Okay. Anybody else have any public testimony other than what we have on the agenda? Okay, seeing none? We're gonna go immediately into our items on the agenda tonight for public hearing. The first one is Hop Jack's liquor license applica...
We do have one.
Oh, we do have one. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I came in late.
Okay.
So, if you just give us, if you give us your name and your city of residence, that would be great.
Sure. My name is Bill White, and I live here in Kaiser. Several elections ago, we had a national night out party, and the city police came by and visited, and they brought a city council lady, and she said, "If you have any questions about traffic, or streets, or anything to do with roads in Kaiser, call on me, I've adopted that activity." I'm not so sure that that lady is still here, and I did not get her name, so I'm asking, which one of you would have adopted the streets of Kaiser as an, as a project?
If I can answer that really quickly, that man sitting right there, Bill Lawyer, has not adopted it, he's been assigned to it, so it is his job to take care of the streets, and he would be your direct contact.
Do you have a business card, sir?
I didn't bring any with me tonight, but there's some, I can go grab one if you'd like me to, bring it back to you.
I would like that, because I would like to get with you later about some crosswalk issues that I have.
Sure, I'll go grab one and bring it back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, oh, well, thank you then, sorry, I didn't see you back there.
Okay.
Thank you very much for coming forward, thank you. Okay, so our first, our first public hearing tonight is Hop Jack's Liquor License Application. City manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On January 26, 2018, the city received an application for a new liquor license for Hop Jack's Restaurant, which we located at 2295 Kaiser Station Boulevard in Kaiser. The application is for a full on-premises license, as required by Kaiser ordinance. A public hearing was scheduled, notice was published, and mailed to all property owners within 200 feet of the proposed establishment. The Kaiser Police Department reports a clear background check on the applicants, and in addition, the Community Development Department finds the location of the establishment to be properly zoned, and had no additional comments. It is recommended the public hearing be opened to allow testimony from the applicants or other interested individuals, and upon completion, the hearing be closed, as further recommended. The city council recommend approval of the application for Hop Jack's under the guidelines as established by ORS 471.178 and the ordinances of the city of Kaiser, and then that recommendation will be forwarded to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission for their dispensation. And I see two representatives buy the fun fancy shirts that they're wearing of Hop Jack's here in our audience, and you folks are welcome to come up, and council may have questions of you, so, thank you. You did not open in the public hearing?
I will open the public hearing, thank you, sorry. Are you, and just say your name and city residence?
Kevin Egan, Bonnie Lake, Washington. So, I guess, wanted to talk a little bit about Hop Jack's. We have one location here in Oregon, and we have 15 in Washington. We're a family-owned company, started in 2009, it was actually my father who started the company. And I mention it's a family-owned company because we, we try to stay small as we grow big, so it becomes more and more challenging as we're growing. So, things that we're trying to do to accomplish that is getting involved in the community. And what was cool of sitting here tonight is I can realize that Kaiser is very a community-driven city with volunteerism, a lot of people coming up, talking about how they volunteer, and that's a big part of what we do. So, for Hop Jack's, yeah, we do sell burgers, we sell fries, we sell ice cold beer and icy drinks, and that is kind of the service that we provide, but there is an external service that we do as well. So, we always call ourselves a development company that serves burgers and fries, and part of that is what we call our helping hand, so we have five fingers of that helping hand. And I'm just want to go through those things tonight, because I think it's more important for us to let you guys know what we do in the community. So, the five things that we do is, so we have a Good Neighbor Fund, so 50 cents from every Hop Jack's beer that we sell goes to what we call a Good Neighbor Fund. It's an ongoing joke for me, when you come into one of our Hop Jack's, I always say, "Hey, have a Hop Jack's beer." You don't have to tell your wife or significant other that you drank tonight, you can say you donated to charity. So, that's kind of our little tagline that I like to use. Just in this last year, we raised over $80,000 for the Good Neighbor Fund. The Good Neighbor Fund is a, we have a committee inside of Hop Jack's that helps team members, community members who are struggling, and we help them get, get them back on their feet. We try to make it so it's not just a, a repeat thing, we want to make it so it gets that person up on their feet again. So, whether that be paying for rent, paying for, or getting a gift card to offset some costs, paying for funeral costs in case a family member passes away. So, those are the things that we like to help with our team members, and then also local community members that frequent us. The next one is a Kids Feeding Kids program, so 50 cents for every kid's meal that's purchased is donated to a Kids Feeding Kids program. Last year, we raised $70,000 for a Kids Feeding Kids program, and what that does is that program is designed to help kids in need, from anywhere from a, a hot meal when they're not going to school in the summertime, because a lot of times, kids who are at school are, get meals for free through the state, but when they're not in school, they don't have that same privilege, so we try to reach out and provide meals for kids who can't afford them. We also do kind of school supplies at the beginning of the year, and we work with local communities or local agencies and, and partner with them, so that way, we can help support the local community and the local elementary schools. In Happy Valley, our location here, there's three elementary schools that we work with, each kind of distribute the funds when there are needs, and so, that's kind of our way to reach out and help other kids. The next thing that we do is fundraiser takeover nights, so the biggest event that we have is an event called Avery Strong. So, there's a, a girl who, elementary school girl who got cancer, and she ended up passing away, and she frequented one of our restaurants, and so, each year, we do a fundraiser at three of our different locations where we donate 20% of our sales for a three-hour period to that foundation. We also do it for high schools, for booster clubs, for football teams, where, hey, come bring your team in, or bring family members, or anybody in to support that night, so either through cancer or any kind of agency, and we'll donate that money to, to them. The next one we do is a scholarship fund, so we partner with Pepsi and then our Bloody Mary Mix Company, Dimitris', and I met somebody here earlier who was very fond of our Bloody Marys, she was telling me, and so, thank you for her support. So, we're able to help people who are, who are in our industry. So, a lot of people in our industry, they don't necessarily go to school, they come up through, or go to school, go to college, so they come up through restaurant industry. And so, with that, they're either going to school and working with us, or they're going to a culinary school, so we try to help them with their further education through our scholarship, scholarship fund. And then the last one is just volunteerism. So, close to here in Kaiser, we, in Happy Valley, we volunteer, we, what we do is we go to schools and we breed to kids, we go to local humane societies and walk dogs, so those are just some of the things that we volunteer for. We also do, you know, Relay for Life, which are kind of those mainstream items, or mainstream events, but we do that at all of our locations. And so, that's kind of who we are, and I wanted to more talk about kind of our helping hand, because as you grow, you kind of can lose touch with that community or where you are at, and kind of look at just a dollar, or try to grow sales, and try to, when people come in the front door, just turn them upside down and shake all the coins out of them, all the, all the money out of their pocket, and we want to focus on being able to provide back to that community that we're in. And our burgers are really good, too, and our beer is really cold, so... So, that's a little bit who we are. Any questions, or...
Council Ryan?
Thank you, welcome. It's nice that you're here to share a little bit about, you know, your, what you do, since we really aren't familiar with you in this area. Do you have a soft opening date, and are you gonna do a soft opening before you do a grand opening, or...
Yes, we are, so to answer your question, we open, or we're planning on opening March 26.
Okay.
Yep, write that down, please come and visit us. And we do soft openings as well, we got Tracy's card, so we're gonna try to coordinate with her to invite you guys to come in. Part of it is a little bit of our own marketing, so, hey, come in and eat for free, eat on us, and hopefully, we build relationships with you guys, and so, you can tell all your friends. Because you guys are so connected into the community, it's just a way to say thank you for accepting us, thanks for taking us in. So, we'll do that the Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night before, so I think it's the 24th, 3rd, and 22nd of that week. And depending on what day, we'll have you guys come, and we'll try to invite around 200 people per night, so...
And real quick, a Facebook page, I'm assuming you guys probably have some social media that we can all connect to and support and get the word out for you as well?
Yeah, so we will have a Facebook page. The way the business Facebook works is you have to have a phone number to be able to claim that page. Don't have a phone number yet, but when we do, we will have that up and running.
Great, thank you. Just be sure and do that for you.
Council Rare?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate, you guys are gonna fit in real perfect in this town.
Awesome, thank you.
And I like all you've said, all your little... Do you guys sponsor, like, graduation ceremonies? Just kidding. But, but I'm, I'm seriously, and are you guys brothers?
Uh, this is actually my brother-in-law.
Okay, but, but I, I like the way, I think, I think this, this, I've never even heard of it, honestly, but it sounds, just the way you described it, and I'm not talking about the food, I'm talking about your organization. The food probably gonna be plus, I'm sure.
Yeah.
But it sounds like a great fit for Kaiser.
Yeah.
I'm pretty excited, you got me all excited about this, so...
Thank you so much. We're excited, too, because we are community-driven, and you can't do one without the other, so you can't have bad food, bad service, and do the kind of, the helping hand, as we call it, so that still drives everything else that we get to do, so that is still our main focus. But that doesn't necessarily interest you folks, we'll just make sure that we deliver on that, we'll deliver great food, we'll deliver great beverages, and then also provide those external things for the community.
Council Reed?
Thank you, Council President. Couple things, first of all, just to, I guess, help you understand about our community, McNary High School, even though we're part of the Salem Kaiser School District, is, is in many ways central to our town, so make sure that you contact McNary for a lot of the super service opportunities, and also, our Chamber of Commerce and Rotary organizations are also very instrumental in coordinating those service, service kind of opportunities that you're looking for, so I would just encourage that you get involved with them as well.
Yeah, thank you for that advice, and we, actually, I already have contacted the high school, so our general manager, who's in Happy Valley right now, contacted them. I was kind of getting the lowdown from him on my drive down, but they have a program, I think it's kind of a, a program that helps kids either get educated on the food service industry, or how to go into that path. And so, the conversation that our general manager had with her was, hey, this is the path that I went down, and I went to college for a couple years, and it wasn't for me, and found Hop Jack's, or found this, a different avenue than going to college. And so, they talked about having him go into that, some of their classes, and talk about, hey, different paths that people can take for different types of careers. And part of who we are is, one of our deliverables is to create the future that you want for all of our team members, and last year, we promoted 11 team members to managers, so that is kind of our way of helping them as well. We want to be a relationship-building company, and if you want to be a server, we think that's awesome, we want you to be the best server possible, and we're gonna help you do that. But if you want to grow and create this as a career for you, we want to provide that for you as well.
Thank you. Council Freeman, go ahead.
Well, I had the pleasure of talking to Kevin before council tonight, so I just wanted to comment that, welcome to Kaiser. You won't be sorry that you came here, as you can tell from this council, we're very community-oriented, and you heard us, award Volunteer of the Quarters, so you know this community will stand behind you. I'm very excited about all the opportunities that you have with your helping hands, and you will not see a lack of that from this community as well, so welcome, and I look forward to seeing you at the restaurant.
Awesome, thank you so much.
First off, let me say that you've said more in this venue, like, as a proprietor asking for a liquor license than like the last 50 y'all put together. So, congratulations on that, I'm not sure that that's a congratulatory thing, but it's, it's good to get to know the vendors in our community, because you're doing, you know, you're providing a business that, that has some risks associated with it, serving alcohol, and so, that's important to us to know you. And, and on that line, are you familiar with Oregon's Responsible Vendor Program through the Oregon Liquor Control Commission, and if you are not, you should become aware of it, and I would highly recommend that you take advantage of that and avail yourself of it. Responsible Vendor Program through OLCC. And has anybody said that you two look like twins? Not like, not like, not like actually, like brother, brother-in-law, but like, I mean, that's remarkable, it's remarkable.
Yeah, we hang out a lot together, I guess.
That must be him.
I wish I had bigger arms like him, but I got the jacket to cover him up.
Council Anderson?
Thank you, Council President Persons. Just echoing what's been said tonight, I'm not gonna repeat it, but again, thank you all so much. We do so many of these, and the folks don't show up, so I really appreciate you showing up, and also, just the message that you all convey about your overall business philosophy, that's really quite encouraging and really cool to hear, too. So, it's already been mentioned by Councilor Reed about getting engaged in the chamber, I understand you all are already doing that, which is awesome. I'm gonna put in one other plug here for you guys, just a suggestion, it's been mentioned about getting involved with McNary, but a great organization I've had some personal connection with in the past is Salem Kaiser Education Foundation, or SKEF, and that is a great way, especially when it comes to your school supply support, because they do the annual school supply drive for this area.
That's awesome.
And if you have not met their executive director, Karina Lemon, or Karina Lee, her favorite word is awesome, so I think that you guys will fit quite well together with your awesome-sounding business philosophy, so thanks so much for coming.
Yeah, they actually also run, or kids camps during the summer, and they provide the USDA program meals to kids during the summer also, so they may be a good connection.
Yeah, they do, they do the, yeah, the lunch and the breakfast programs, too, actually, so, good stuff.
That's very cool. Thank you for the help.
Any other questions for Kevin?
Any other questions for Kevin? Thank you. Thank you so much for coming in, and we're excited for it to open.
Awesome, we are, too. Thank you for having us.
And did you want to speak to Tommy, or no? Anyone else want to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and Council Freeman.
Okay, so bear with me, first time. So, um, I move the city council adopt the recommendation for the Hopjacks liquor license, um, under the guidelines established by ORS 471.178 and the ordinance of the, of the City of Kaiser, and the recommendations shall then be forwarded to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission for final approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that, uh, Kaiser City Council approve the recommendation for the liquor license application for Hopjacks, and forward that to the Oregon, uh, Liquor Control Commission. Uh, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much.
You guys.
And good luck, we can't wait.
Good luck, yeah.
You, too. Uh, our next item for a public hearing tonight is the 2018 Kaiser Liquor License Renewals. I'm gonna open the public hearing. City Manager.
Nicely done. Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Each year, the Oregon Liquor Control Commission requires liquor establishments to renew their license to sell alcoholic beverages. City of Kaiser adopted an ordinance which declares business owners shall have the responsibility to contribute to rather than jeopardize the well-being of the community, and the liquor licensee should promote, sell, and serve alcoholic beverages in a responsible manner, which minimizes risks associated with its use. The ordinance outlines, uh, guidelines for annual review of each of the liquor establishments within the city. Uh, following the guidelines is outlined in the ordinance, notice of a public hearing was established in the Kaiser Times, or published in the Kaiser Times, asking for objections to the license renewals. No responses were received by the writing of this report. Kaiser Police Department has reviewed the 2017 calls for service at each of the establishments, um, that you would have found on the first page of this report, actually, and I neglected or declined to read through the entire list. Um, and, and they have found, uh, that none of the, that the establishment has, I'm sorry, that each of the establishments, and has no reason to recommend denial of the liquor license renewals, uh, for those establishments, and the report is attached. Kaiser Community Development Department also had an opportunity to comment on zoning issues for each of these establishments, and there were, there were no violations noted. It is recommended City of Kaiser, City Council, open the public hearing, receive testimony, and close the public hearing, and is further recommend council vote to recommend renewal of the listed liquor licensees, and forward this recommendation to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Um, I have no one listed on the public hearing to testify tonight. Is there anyone that would like to testify on this issue? Seeing none, I will, uh, close the public hearing.
I move the city council adopt the recommendation to recommend the renewal of all the listed liquor licensees, and forward this recommendation to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council approve all the, uh, liquor license, uh, applications, and forward this recommendation, recommendation to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and asked me, thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda for public hearing tonight is a resolution, uh, exempting the brand name specification purchase of Surface America Fall Protection product from competitive bidding and purchasing play structure materials, Surface America Fall Protection Materials, and installation services from Ross Recreation Equipment Company, Inc., for Meadows Park. I'm gonna open the public hearing, so the City Manager can explain all that to us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, and I'm not gonna explain any of it. City Attorney Johnson is.
Thank you, thank you, Chris. Um, Council President Parsons and Council, uh, we're doing something tonight we don't do very often, and that's having an exemption from the bidding rules. In this particular case, it seems appropriate, and I think you folks are familiar with the port-in-place surface at the Big Toy. I believe this is similar bill. Um, staff has spent a lot of time working with this vendor, uh, when we did it with the, the Big Toy, and the determination of staff is, this is the material that really makes sense, uh, to use here, um, and no one else can provide it. Um, and, uh, when they looked into it pretty carefully between other vendors, then that was the conclusion they reached. Um, so, and it makes sense to do it with the same company who would be doing the play structure, so we could coordinate that. So we tried to avoid taking exemptions from the bidding process, but in this particular case, it made sense to do so, and required to have a public hearing, so if there's any objections, that people can show up and, and do so. So we have a resolution. The recommendation is to open the public hearing and take any testimony, close the hearing if there's no questions, or objections, to adopt the resolution, which would exempt, um, from the bidding process, uh, the port-in-place structure, and, and that structure for Meadows Park. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, City Managers. Um, sorry, thank you, Shannon. Um, there is no one, uh, on the schedule to testify. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to testify about this resolution? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Council Freeman.
I move the city council adopt Resolution R 2018, exemption of the brand name specification purchase of Surface America Fall Protection Product from competitive bidding and purchasing play structure materials, Surface America Fall Protection Materials, and installation services from Ross Recreation Equipment Company, Inc., for Meadows Park.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution R 2018, exemption of the brand name specification purchase of Surface America Fall Protection Product from competitive bidding and purchasing play structure materials, Surface America Fall Protection Materials, and installation services from Ross Recreation Equipment Company, Inc., for Meadows Park. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and asked me. Uh, the last one we have on public hearing tonight is a resolution exemption of the brand name specifications purchase of goods from competitive bidding and purchasing Cisco brand name equipment, and I will open the public hearing. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. City Attorney Johnson.
Thank you, Chris. Council President Parsons and, uh, Council. And as I was just saying, we don't do exemptions very often, but, uh, I was talking to Bill before the meeting, and I think we do maybe one every three or four years, but we have two on one night tonight. Uh, this has to do with the city's phone system. Uh, it's been almost, uh, 10 years, if you can believe it, nine years, uh, since we opened City Hall here. And the phones themselves, or what I call the phone bases, are still functionable. But the server and the software, the software is, it's outdated. In other words, it's like trying to run a Windows XP computer, you know, it just, just doesn't work after a while. Uh, so, the only way that we can do that, though, is to exempt, so we can choose Cisco to match up with the phones, because only Cisco's server and Cisco's software will work with this. And this, and I don't know much about this high-tech stuff, it's called VoIP, Voice Over Internet Protocol phones. Um, but, uh, this, uh, will have a competitive edge to it, uh, just not the brand. So there are vendors, there's multiple vendors, that can all access, uh, wholesale the Cisco, uh, equipment. So it'll still be sent out for requests for proposals, but because we're specifying that we want this brand only, we do need to go through the state, uh, process for the public hearing to exempt that. So, uh, that's the reasoning behind this. So the recommendation is to, um, take any testimony, and, and if there's no objections, uh, adopt the attached resolution.
Thank you. I do not see anyone in the audience. Uh, is there any questions of staff? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Uh, Council Freeman.
I move the city council adopt Resolution R 2018, exemption of the brand name specifications, purchase of goods from competitive bidding, and purchasing Cisco brand name equipment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the city council adopt Resolution R 2018, exemption of the brand name specifications, purchase of goods from competitive bidding, and purchasing Cisco brand name equipment. All those in, oh, I'm sorry, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, that takes us to the consent cal, oh, there, we don't have any administrative action tonight, so that takes us to the consent calendar. Council, um, Council Freeman.
Okay, we have four items on the consent calendar. Today, uh, we have a resolution authorizing the city manager, manager to enter into, how do you pronounce that, Chris? Zylum Total Care Services Agreement. Uh, item B is authorizing the city manager to enter into the city, into the City of Kaiser Street and Right-of-Way Landscape Maintenance Services, and Vegetated Storm Water Facility Maintenance Services Contract with Cascade Grounds, Inc. C, a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase two Hustler 72, is that inches, feet? Inch? I'm so bad at that. Zero-turn mowers for Parks Division of the Public Works Department. And item D is a resolution appointing municipal court judge pro tem.
Thank you. Do we have any polls?
Council Freeman.
I move the adoption of the four items on the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt, uh, the consent calendar. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, that takes us to Council liaison reports. Um, I think she picked on Council Anderson last time, so we'll go with you, Council Ryan.
Thank you. Um, short and sweet tonight, we have, um, an art, art meeting is next, next Tuesday, so I don't have an update there, since I've already made one. And, um, Kaiser United, um, I was, I was not able to make that meeting. So, um, I did attend the commissioner's breakfast, um, and it was always good to hear what's going on in the county and, and, uh, catch up with them, but other than that, then short and sweet tonight. Thank you.
Council Harrah.
Thank you, Adam. Um, Matt did a good job on the Parks Board. It was kind of a interesting, uh, uh, meeting. I would recommend you guys to watch it and, and see what you think. Very interesting. Uh, I want to thank, um, our volunteers that we had here, Hans and, um, Dan and Matt. I didn't have an opportunity to say this, but they, they have done so much. And Matt, we all know about that, but Dan and, um, and Hans have done, uh, for years and years have been part of this community in many aspects. And Hans, I was with him the very first day we walked over to Shamakana, and he told me about his little dream, and I, and I, it's just so awesome watching him from start to end. Uh, we had, uh, I had the opportunity to meet our Wear Mart manager, Mr. Dukes, Derek Dukes, young man, and welcome him, uh, very nice man. And that was, I really enjoyed, um, our chat. Um, also, we had a Marion County Public Service, uh, Public Safety Coordinating Council meeting, which was interesting. And I'm not gonna go into the details, but, uh, we had a great report from, um, uh, Chief Moore on the progress of the, um, the new, um, let's see, Public Safety Building will be the, the county one, right, Jason's? Uh, the new built police, uh, uh, is gonna be over on Division, and it's kind of interesting the way they're gonna have the parking there. There's a website we can check it out, I'm not gonna go into it. But it was very, um, informative. And of course, Sheriff Myers also, um, gave us an update on that, uh, public service building, which is gonna be a very nice building. Uh, also, I want to thank Jesse Cuomo for, uh, uh, doing the great job on the volunteer coordinating committee. He had to move, uh, to Woodburn, he had some issues there, but our new appointee will be Myra Hernandez, who is, um, uh, community outreach, uh, person, uh, from Kennedy Elementary. Nice young lady, and she's, um, Oregon State graduate. Uh, but, uh, she's gonna be good anyway, no matter what, so we'll see how she does. And she's, and she's looking forward to helping the community. I'm trying to get more people involved, and she's the kind of person that we're bringing in, and you, you, you'll like her, she's really cool, so.
Awesome, and have you given that name to Tracy, or to give to Debbie?
Yes, I've already, I've done all the work with Debbie and all that, so.
Thank you.
So this is the official announcement for her, and looking forward to, so we'll tell you guys to be nice and welcome her the nice way. So, uh, last thing, I want to promote this Young Life on March 9th. They're having their annual banquet and fundraiser. You know, the city's never participated as much, and someday I would really, I'd talk to Chris about that, like to help. I, I myself, you know, the poorest of all of us is buying a table, so, but I want to make sure that we, if we can, uh, participate and help them, because Young Life has done, I know, I know we get into the religious thing, but I mean, they've done so much for the community, I don't even look at that, I just know that, uh, they've done a lot for our kids and our community, so thank you for that. And of course, Rotary is gonna have their big fundraiser, and can't say enough about them. Uh, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Reed.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, we had the, um, Stormwater Advisory Committee meeting, and, uh, at, at that, we were able to talk about the part of that permit that requires us to do some educational outreach and so forth, and that was really fun to brainstorm and see what we're already doing in that respect, and, um, what we can do. And, and, uh, speaking as someone who knew virtually nothing about that before, before getting involved with this commi, uh, committee, it was really exciting to see, uh, how many people are in, involved in getting this, this out, and it, it's a quality of life thing for our community, and so that was, it was really fun to be a part of, and so, um, that was, that was good. I was involved with the FBLA, um, regional competition that they had at McNary, and I did the, the, um, the, um, judging for public speaking, along with Bill Post and Daniel, I can't remember his last name, but he, he does Point S, he's the manager at Point S Tires, and so we had a very interesting time, uh, with that, and just a lot of really impressive young people, and that was, that was really an honor to be a part of. We also had the Ben Miller Park cleanup the same day, and I, although I was not a part of that, because I was at the, the FBLA thing, it was really good to see the turnout. We had an especially good turnout from Whittaker Middle, Middle School, and so thank you for all those who participated in that. I was, uh, went to the Kurt table, Kurt Schrader Roundtable, uh, and that was a very interesting community conversation, and talked about some of the, the concerns of the community, and really appreciate his outreach as far as getting a feel for what the communities around here are needing, so that he can be that advocate at the federal level. Uh, we had a Heritage Board meeting, Kaiser Heritage Board, and that was, uh, that was, we, we had voted to change that to the Kaiser Cultural Center, and so, to reflect what, uh, the, the changes going on there, and so we're really excited about that. This Friday at McNary, Ron Wyden is holding a community, um, community, uh...
Conversation?
Well, yes, Town Hall, thank you, that's, I was trying to wrap my head around.
One of those.
Yeah, Town Hall meeting at, at McNary at 9:30 in the auditorium. Uh, so, again, that's a fantastic conversation, uh, to be a part of. Um, they, he, I, I went to another town hall of his, and he is very, very much interested in listening to what we have to say, and explaining some of the craziness that's happening, uh, at the federal level, and, um, some of the ramifications of that. We, there is a Kaiser, um, Homegrown Theater housewarming this Saturday between noon and 3:00 at our new Heritage Center location, and we invite all who are interested in, uh, being a part of that in any way, whether volunteering or acting, or just going to the plays. Um, we'll be so, that, they, they will be celebrating what they've done thus far in their six seasons, and kicking off our seventh season. And then we also have a Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association meeting on March 1st, and that is our yearly meeting, and we would love to get, uh, as many people as we can out for that. We have purchased signs, uh, that, that we are now ready to, to set up, and hopefully get the word out a little bit more on that. So that has been a good step forward in the publicizing of that event. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Council Reed. Council Freeman.
So mine is, uh, short, uh, and I just want to give, uh, thanks to Council President Parsons for covering my committees while I was, uh, out on vacation, and Mayor Clark as well. Um, I did attend the Planning Commission meeting this week, and, um, Matt pretty much was a rendition of exactly what happened, huh, Nate? Almost word for word. Um, so it was great, it was short and sweet, and always when I cover for Council President Parsons, we get out of there on time and quick, so, um, sorry, but we always have short meetings when I cover for you. And then, um, I know Wear Mart, uh, by Winco has been open for a few weeks, but I had the opportunity to go through it this weekend and purchase some groceries, so I think it's a great addition, and, and we have some new restaurants in town, so I just hope everyone is, um, you know, visiting our restaurants, and then a support of all of our businesses, and we heard we have a new one coming, uh, next month. And then, uh, Thursday this week, uh, I will be meeting with Tim for the Audit Committee. So, yay, I know he's so excited, and that's my week, but I know we have a lot coming up in, uh, next month. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. You know, I have to say that only an audit, or a finance director would get excited about a, an audit committee. Yes, indeed. Okay, sorry. Alrighty. Um, well, I had one scheduled snafu, and I wound up missing the Kaiser Chamber Board meeting, but I, I'm happy to report, uh, a few things that are coming up here. Of course, Irish Festival will be May 17th through the 20th. Planning is well underway for that. They've got the band set, and, uh, you know, to, you know, again, I just can't underscore the amazing, uh, group of volunteers that come in. again, I just can't underscore the amazing group of volunteers that come in, come in, come together to put that on year in and year out, so really truly remarkable. The, and scheduling issues again have precluded me from going to the Stormwater Advisory Committee, so I appreciate Counselor Reed doing so and covering that very important side of things that are coming up or that they are working on. The, going back to the chamber for a sec, coming up, I know that we all have this on our calendar, but just to underscore, we've got two community conversations actually that the chamber will be coordinating. One is Wednesday, February 28th, that'll be here at the Kaiser Civic Center. Actually, both of them will be, they'll run from 6:00 to 7:30. That one's very important, I think they're all important, but that one in particular will be talking about the future of River Road, that's the working, or the title of that, so folks should come out and lend their, their opinions and visions and so forth for how River Road should develop, right, Mr. Brown? Indeed, yay. And then also, another community conversation the chamber will be involved with will be coming up on March 22nd. Hopefully they've, I'm sure they've contacted the city staff on that already, but that will be talking about the state of our schools and the proposed bond, that, which we heard from Superintendent Perry last meeting, I believe. One final chamber meeting to mention will be, and I'm sorry, I do not have the date on this one, but the, the chamber March meeting will be the State of the City address, presumably by Mayor Clark. The couple, let's see, couple, actually, two upcoming events and one, two events that already occurred, All-City Concerts by our middle schoolers and our high schoolers were just absolutely outstanding. They always do such an awesome job year in and year out and this one was no exception. Last week was the All-City High School Honor Concert with orchestra, band, and choir. And they always end up with mass number of Battle Hymn of the Republic and it's just absolutely outstanding. That one in particular, I've got to put in a plug, was written, the arrangement was written by a former Salem Kaiser School music educator. So if you didn't make it this year, really, I encourage you to go because it's, it'll just blow you away, just the talent that our kids display musically is just astounding. February 27th will be the Whittaker Honor Recognition, Honor Students Recognition, so I know parents have got that on their calendar as well. And then the final thing that I will mention that I absolutely have to, this is above all else, is a happy anniversary to my wife this Saturday, will mark 28 years. Thank you.
I, I only have like one thing to report because I was on vacation with the sun in Hawaii. So I did go to the traffic safety bikeways before I left on that nice sunny vacation and they, they're just, you know, working about some projects and planning for the summer. You know, they've got the fire department where they'll be handing out helmets, they're going to work with Surf Pro again and handing out helmets. They've got about 80 helmets right now and they've got like $600 or $700 to purchase more, so they're looking really good on helmets. Of course, they can always use extra money to purchase more because you can really never have enough helmets with the kids because we do give them away for a $5 donation if the family can afford it. If not, then the child gets the helmet, so we don't turn them away. One of the big things that they're really working on is the, is a bike rack at McNary High School, the one that's there is probably as old as the high school. It's also, and not a very good place where it can be seen and so they're really advocating and they have a youth committee liaison, Isaac Matthews, who is actually working with Principal Jespersen and others to maybe help move this along and to see if there's something we can do to get a bike rack in a, in a better bike rack in a more visible place on the school grounds. So they're, they're working on that and other than that, they're just going to keep watching for grants and they're going to keep plugging along. They, they seem to have plenty of information every month, so. Oh yeah, oh, and the, don't forget that the bicycle thing, the Cookie Monster thing is on April 20, I'm not even going to blow it, 27th, I believe.
There's time.
There's time, there's plenty of time. And that's all I have, so. This time is provided to allow the mayor, city council members, or staff an opportunity to bring newer old matters before the city council that are not on tonight's agenda. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Tracy? Tim?
Yes.
Chief T.
I can't recall if I told you all or not, but we did hire four people starting March, they'll start the academy March 19th, graduating July 13th. These are all, this is four of the five for the police fee and they should hit the road solo, middle of November, so about a year from the time you all decided to give us that. And we're very pleased, still looking to hire two more, one from retirement and one more from the police fee. Thank you and thank you to the community.
Very good. Bill?
Nothing tonight, thank you, Chris.
Mr. Brown?
Nothing tonight.
Counselor?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. I have no written communications tonight, I didn't see any in the mayor's box. Agenda input, regular session, city council on March 5th. It looks like we finally have a work session on March 12th, Long Range Planning Task Force Meeting, is that correct? Okay, at 6 o'clock here. And then on March 19th, a regular session, city council meeting. Does anyone have anything else for the good of the order, I think she says? If not, we are adjourned at 8:16 PM.